Thank you very much. Could I just say that I'd like to now respond to questions or comments or insults that you might have for me? Obviously, the purpose of our gathering is healthcare. One second, and then I'll recognize you. Is healthcare, but I'll be glad to answer any question or comment that you might have about any issue or situation or challenge that you think this nation faces that you'd like to hear my views on. And could I say town hall meetings, in my view, is the most important part of a campaign? Because it's easy for me to give you my views, but it's not only important, but challenging for me to hear yours and your questions or comments. So if I could ask our people with a microphone if you'd like to keep the microphone with your question, because if you have a follow-up question or comment, or if on the extremely rare occasion I didn't respond to your question, I'd like to, no, that almost never happens, but I'd like to respond. Could I also mention that my dear friend Senator Mike Dwyane and his wonderful wife Fran are here with us this morning? We have a special friend, our representative here, who just returned yesterday, who also represents us in the legislature, just returned from serving in Iraq. Josh Mandell. Representative Josh Mandell, his second tour. Yes, ma'am, we'll begin with you. And again, if you want to hang on to the microphone after you ask your question or make a comment that you want me to respond to, I'd be glad to do it. Thank you for being here.
Senator McCain, I don't have a question. I have a statement. Godspeed in the elections.
That's a great, it's a great beginning of this town hall meeting. We'll be doing several more, so if you're not busy, I'd love to take you with me. There are parts of the country that perhaps you haven't visited yet. We'd love to have you come with us. Just a brief comment. I'm going to travel all over this entire country. I want every American to have the chance to view me. I think it's important that we campaign everywhere in this country and do as many of these events as we possibly can. Yes, ma'am. And I, we have a microphone coming, I believe.
Hi. My name is Peggy Chellin. I work for a federally qualified community health center on the near west side of Cleveland, neighborhood family practice. And first, I want to thank you for coming during sharing your views and your plans and understanding how important this issue of healthcare really is. It's certainly my part of the issue. These government staff. I just need to know, there are 2.8 million Ohioans that are at or below 200% of the poverty level. And, oh wow. And 1.8 million live between 200 and 300% of the poverty level. Those at 200% cannot afford to contribute anything to their healthcare after they take care of their other basic needs. Those between 200 and 300% have a limited ability to pay for health coverage depending on family size. Those people are going to be in trouble and are in trouble now. Those are basically the people that my organization takes care of. And I'm concerned about further privatizing healthcare, basically because the insurance company have made life or death situations choices and decisions on people's healthcare and because they've gone home with billions of dollars in bonuses as a result. And so I'm certainly interested in your plan. I'd love to hear more and I'd love to participate more. But I also would like to hear you address the huge insurance lobby and how they have kept themselves making billions of dollars at the demise of American citizens.
Thank you. First of all, let me just say in the beginning, I believe and am a strong supporter of community health centers. And I think we need a lot more of them. I think we need a lot more of them in my home state of Arizona as well as across this country. And the most dedicated people I know are people who serve there in community health centers, including physicians and nurses and others, because as we all know, their income is limited. So I'm a great believer and supporter of community health centers. In addition to the numbers that you gave, there, as you know, there are 47 million Americans that are without health insurance today. Now, half of those people are people who are between jobs. But as we see economic conditions worsen in America, more than 250,000 Americans recently and suddenly lost their jobs, that that number is an increase. And the other half are people that are children. There's 8 million children that have not signed up for S-Chip. There's other people who simply have chosen not to take insurance. But the fact is that there's also a large group of Americans who are in a category where they simply can't get insurance. That's why I talked about this guaranteed access plan, where we are going to have to work with the states and the governors. And there's 20 states now that have enacted some laws that restrict the size of premiums and do other things. And there's proposals on the tables, on the table in states to have risk pools, to provide the proper funding, and it's going to require a federal contribution to care for the chronic disease, pre-existing condition, a group of Americans who simply, under any circumstances, could not afford. And frankly, some of those people are the people that you see at the community health centers as well. And we see at the emergency rooms all over America because they can't get healthcare anyplace else. And you know better than I do that emergency room care is the most expensive form of healthcare in America. And I'm insulting your intelligence by telling you these things. But it brings me to my point, that I don't believe bigger, you said you don't think it should be further privatized. I think that's probably true, but I also don't think we should have greater government control over healthcare system in America. I think if you go to Canada, or you go to some other countries where we have government health-run, healthcare-run systems, I don't think you would find the quality of healthcare in those countries at a level that we Americans have grown to expect. So one of the fundamentals of the proposal that I have is every family in America have a $5,000 refundable tax credit. And they would be able to grow across state lines and shop online or anywhere in America and purchase a health insurance policy that suits them and their needs best. Right now, when you have employer-provided health insurance, you don't have a choice. You take, you take the policy that your employer gives you. Or in the case of small businesses, that employer can't provide it. So we have no money now to purchase a health insurance policy. At least you've got $5,000 in a refundable tax credit where you can go online, you choose the insurance company of your choice, and since you're not confined to the state of Ohio, you can go anyplace in America. Then these insurance companies will have to compete more effectively against each other. It's competition. Whenever there's a company or corporation in any line of business in this, in America in this world, that corner the market and squeeze out competition, then costs to the consumer go up. So I think that one of the key elements is for us to give every American family this refundable tax credit so that they can choose the policy that best suits their family's needs. And I don't believe that employer-based, if somebody wants to keep their health insurance policy that their insurer, that their employer is providing, fine. That's fine with me. But I also want to give them the choice. Now, we need walk-in clinics. We need to have community health centers. We need to have outcome, as I mentioned in my earlier remarks, outcome-based treatment. My friends, if a person has one of these five diseases that I was talking about, and you pay for every procedure, every test, every visit to a doctor, obviously, the costs go up and up and up. I want to tell a healthcare provider, here's a patient with a chronic disease. Treat them for a year, and here's a certain amount of money, and if that patient is in good shape after that period of time, we will reward you, but give them their care. Number two, there's a program called cash and counseling, where seniors are given the money. They're given the money by the federal government to take care of their own healthcare needs. And they choose, they choose which doctor or which healthcare provider that they need. And you know what we find out? The obvious. When they're making the decisions, that they're far wiser. They're far wiser than they were. And finally, we need to put the choices into the hands of the patient. And that's the whole theory behind that. There's many other steps that we need to take. One of them is malpractice reform. I think it's pretty clear that any doctor in this room will tell you that they either have to, or their associates prescribe unnecessary tests or procedures because of their fear of ending up in court. And finally, what we've seen here, and I'm sorry for the long answer, but you really have put your finger on fundamental problem with healthcare in America. What we've seen here today, and what we have at the Cleveland Clinic, is remarkable. We have patients having access to their records, to their healthcare records. We have patients in direct contact, no matter where they are in the world, with their physician and their provider. We have patients and healthcare providers, whether they're on vacation in California or not, as Dr. Harris was, where they get online and they notice that a patient, as a result of a test that they've read online, needs to come back from their vacation and get additional tests. They don't have to thumb through the stack of records and x-rays. They're all online with them. This is, they've got a partnership with Google, by the way, I have no stock in Google, where it's going to be just like when you Google somebody, only if they're going to have privacy, where there's going to be a record, there's going to be a record, if they have an allergy, what their previous healthcare record was. Can imagine. And all of this, all of this that's being done, and it's happening in other places in America, it's just happened to be done very well here at the Cleveland Clinic, is we're going to reduce costs. We're going to reduce paperwork. We're going to put everything online. And we're going to reduce costs. Because the problem of healthcare, if you forget everything I say to you at this town hall meeting, and I'll stop with this, it is not the quality of healthcare in America that's the problem. It's the cost of healthcare in America that's the problem. And if you have double-digit inflation, or this incredible, nearly so, in healthcare costs in America, we will never achieve our goal of making healthcare available and affordable to all Americans. Yes, sir?
First of all, this is the first time I've ever come to any kind of debate, even through Vietnam or anything. I was always below radar. And I want to tell you that this is the greatest country in the world, and my business is in the Middle East, in the Pacific, and in the Pacific Rim. And I think we should look at healthcare in several different categories. I think you're on the right track. However, people that have healthcare, have healthcare and are fighting the costs, and that's one group of citizens. They're fighting the cost, the escalation cost, where it's costing somewhere between $900 to $1,000 a month, even if the employer is paying something. Now, that's after tax dollars, not before tax dollars. Then you have the party who's lost their job, who's going through transitions, who would like to have it but can't afford it. Now, I feel that $5,000 of a tax credit...
Can you hear me in question?
Okay, I am. $5,000 of a tax credit is unreasonable. It should be the full amount of what's paid for, for healthcare premiums. I would venture to say that the politicians, I would like to know what percent their healthcare costs are in an after-tax dollars to their revenues that are taken in. I believe that $5,000 is too low, and it should be the total amount. That's my opinion.
In all due respect, sir, then, there is no incentive then to keep costs down. Then, if you're going to pay the total bill, then the bill will continue to go up. In all due respect, that's my view. And we obviously, we obviously have a difference of opinion, and I'll give you the microphone back so you can disagree vigorously.
I disagree that there will be an incentive, because once the tax base is changed, okay, and people start getting the full deduction, there'll be more scrutiny in the healthcare costs. As for the care and everything else like that, I believe that it's not equated properly, and that's one of the problems that's going on. That's just my opinion.
Well, I thank you, sir, but again, I'd just like to repeat my assertion that if you just say, okay, we're going to pay for everybody's healthcare, then there are not the sufficient incentives to bring costs down and to stop the dramatic escalation. I want to repeat again, that's pretty much along the lines of at least, at least a portion of our, portion of our population of the situation as it is today. And I appreciate your view and your input, and I will respect it, but again, respectfully disagree, and I hope to be able to convince you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Michelle Bentley. Senator McCain, our current medical system seems to be more reactive than proactive in affecting wellness. How does your plan address this issue?
Thank you, and I thank you for coming today. My friends, in my, there are many things that I did not cover in my opening comments, but let me just say that, to state the obvious, one of the most alarming statistics in America today is the rise amongst young people of obesity, high blood pressure, and diabetes. No healthcare system in the world can sustain an increase in that amongst young people. We have to emphasize wellness and fitness, ranging from insurance policies that reward people for practicing wellness and fitness. And by the way, we can certainly, with their medical records online, if they wish to, can show those records to their insurer. We also, obviously, need to encourage simple things like membership in a health club, cash rewards back to the employees, for employees that have practiced the wellness and fitness habits that will obviously make them maintain good health. I also want to mention one other thing that sounds a little maybe naive, but I think it's effective. At Miami Children's Hospital, I met a young man who had lost 76 pounds by dieting and exercise. And the motivation for that young man to do that was a thing called Shaq's Challenge. Shaquille O'Neal had engaged in a program where Shaq challenged young people to get back in shape. Now, in all due respect to my influence over young Americans, if it had been Max's challenge, I'm not sure that this young man would have responded in the affirmative fashion. I'd like to ask every athlete in America that is famous and doing well to go around to our schools all over America and motivate these young people to get in shape and to exercise and to practice wellness and fitness. I'd like to see the school lunch program. I think every parent should know the school lunch program at their school. I think every parent and school board member should know the physical education program that is in each of these schools. And we've got to make young people understand that wellness and fitness is directly related to their future and their longevity in this great nation. So I think we need to put in a lot of incentives from insurance point of view and all those kinds of things, but I also would like to see us do a better job of motivating young Americans to practice wellness and fitness. Thank you. Can I go back? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and then I'll go to you, sir.
Senator McCain, we're glad to have you in Cleveland. I, as a public health consultant, I'm extremely interested in your thoughts on the vulnerable students, for seniors. I mean, I'm going to be a part of the baby boom generation, and I want to know, am I going to eat, or am I going to pay for my prescriptions?
Thank you. And I think you have posed, I don't think you've attached a lot of drama to what is an actual reality. And there are people who are making that decision. Now, we have the Medicare Part D program, as you know, prescription drug program. I think we made a serious mistake when we didn't say that wealthy Americans like Warren Buffett, like Bill Gates, like myself, should pay for our own prescription drugs. There's no reason for you to pay for wealthy Americans. So I would impose a cost on that. I think the other thing I would do amongst choices that have to be made is, if you want to go to Canada and buy a prescription drug there, by God, you should be able to take the trip. And I think the prescription drug, the drug companies should have to compete rather than have sole ownership, not only of certain programs. In the VA, the Veterans Administration, the pharmaceutical companies have to compete to provide prescription drugs to our veterans. That's not the case with Medicare Part D, as I'm sure you know. I think also we have to redouble our efforts to get generic drugs onto the market. There are still significant impediments on the part of the pharmaceutical companies that delay or sometimes stop the generic drugs, prescription drugs, from getting onto the market. So I don't think there's one specific answer. But no American should go to bed tonight and having to make a choice between eating and their prescription drugs. I think we have gone some distance in solving that, but that's one of the reasons why I think people should have a health insurance policy that would have at least some impact on that ability to obtain additional prescription drugs if they need to. Thank you for the question. Yes, sir? Did you want to respond?
No.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mr. President, welcome back to Cleveland. This is a question and a comment on a different type of health, and it has to do with our energy health. A number of years ago, the AAA came out with this statistic that said that 65% of the energy in the United States is used moving automobiles from a standing stop to some speed. I don't know if that's exactly correct, who knows? But in any event, it just seems to me that, and I brought some information here for you, some research, that if we were able to coordinate our traffic lights, we would be in a situation where we could save hundreds of millions of gallons of gas. Is this a solution that you've heard about and that you have a comment on?
I've heard about that, and I've also heard that an idling automobile, which is due to traffic congestion, obviously uses an enormous amount of gasoline. But I just want to point out, and this doesn't have to do with healthcare, but it may in some respect, because when lower-income Americans, much less all Americans, are paying more for a gallon of gasoline, low-income Americans pay more because they usually travel further and they drive older automobiles, which consume more gasoline, that what is happening with the increase in the price of gasoline is hurting and harming all Americans, but particularly low-income Americans. And so it is a compelling argument for energy independence. It is also, by the way, in case you haven't heard, I called for and asked for a little relief for this summer between Memorial Day and Labor Day, from people having, to pay 18 cents a gallon tax for gasoline and 24 cents a gallon tax for diesel fuel, just to give them a little break for the summer. You'd have thought that it was the end of Western civilization as we know it. And wouldn't it be nice, maybe, maybe at the end of the summer, parents would have a little more money to buy the school supplies for their kids that are going back to school? Maybe they could have a little nicer, maybe a night out and have a meal? I mean, when we have families sitting around the kitchen table who have just lost their jobs and don't know how they're going to keep their home, why don't we give them a little break? Instead, instead, in all due respect to those that drive around in chauffeured limousines, you'd think that we are destroying the economy of America. I think we can do without, for a little while, the bridge to nowhere in Alaska that cost $233 million to an island with 50 people on it. I think we can do without some of these pork barrel projects. And so, and I'm sorry to go on so long about that, but it's astonishing to me to see that just to give people, I don't pretend that it eliminates our dependence on foreign oil, but it's very interesting how the special interests in Washington will react in such an alarmed fashion that you'd think that it was something that's going to destroy America. But finally, just let me say, sir, I agree with you. And obviously, we have to have better transportation, particularly all over America. But I think that the real problem is our dependence on foreign oil. And it's a national security issue, it's an economic issue, it's every kind of issue. And my friends, we're now sending over $400 billion a year to pay for imported oil that goes to countries that don't like us very much, half our trade deficit, and some of that money ends up in the hands of terrorist organizations. So we have to have a national priority to eliminate that dependency, and that's wind, solar, tide, and nuclear power, and cars that will go 100 miles with a battery before you have to plug it in, and hybrid, and hydrogen, and all of the things that we can do, as I emphasize again, nuclear power. My friends, the French, we always want to imitate the French. 80% of their electricity is generated by nuclear power. And by the way, they now have a pro-American president, which shows that if you live long enough, anything can happen in this world. So, did you have a follow-up? Go ahead. And it does impact healthcare costs, because if you're spending money on gasoline, then you're not spending it on healthcare for your family, and you may not be getting a regular checkup, and you may end up in the emergency room. So it does have, it does have a direct effect on healthcare in America. Please follow up, and I'm...
And there are dramatic environmental issues that result, because of the pollution. But I'd like to give you this research, or one of your people.
I'd like to have it.
And also, I wanted just to say in passing that I have switched from drinking wine to drinking beer, as to help your campaign. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Good morning.
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning. I don't know if this works or not, and I'll try to talk loud. My name is David Epstein. I'm a physician and also a supporter of the Partnership for Chronic Disease. Been in medicine for a long time. I applaud your view and your plan in terms of attacking chronic disease, which is a huge burden. I'm wondering what your sense is for the role of two things, personal accountability in managing and also preventing disease in the first place? How do you see this plan addressing that?
Well, doctor, I think you and I know that regular checkups are a vital part of any prevention program that we might have. The wellness and fitness side that I just talked about is vital, particularly amongst young people. I think that, you know better than I do, that we're having a huge problem in America with the immunity that people build up to the drugs that are supposed to, what, the pneumonia, the new strains of the flu, et cetera. You know about all those things, and I'm going to have to leave that to science. But wellness and fitness are obviously one of the fundamental keys. Also, if you make health insurance affordable and available to every American, then the likelihood of... likelihood of them seeing a physician regularly, on a regular basis, if there's incentives to wellness and fitness in their policies, then obviously they will take advantage of that. Some employers give their employees a cash, actual cash bonus for practicing wellness and fitness and regular checkups, et cetera. And education, education is so important in America. And I would like to just mention one area that concerns me as much as anything else, and that's smoking. Is there anybody here that doesn't believe that smoking will kill you? I smoked for a number of years. That was the old Navy pilot kind of mystique. And I asked a doctor friend of mine the other day, if I hadn't quit smoking 29 years ago, what would my health be? He said it'd be fine, you'd be dead. So we're not doing enough. We're not doing what we need to do to educate young people. And when you see the rise of smoking of young people in America, and we're taking the taxes that people pay on a pack of cigarettes, and they're using it for general revenues, in all due respect, Josh, instead of using it for anti-tobacco advertising and treatment of tobacco-related illness, they're doing a great disservice to America. I would make sure that those funds, those funds go where they deserve. Now, will you give me your ideas as to what we should be doing, please?
I was actually going to ask a quick follow-up. An analogy in talks that I've given over the years says, you know, we buy these wonderful new automobiles that come with warranties. But guess what? If you don't change the oil, take the car in for service, the warranty is void. Would you ever see a point in our country where we could, we could hold individuals accountable for meeting the preventive guidelines and keeping weight in the appropriate place? Do we ever put conditions on coverage for things and actually have people responsible for maintaining themselves?
I would much rather, doctor, provide incentives for them to do so. I really would. I'd rather do that than mandated. We all know that families in America now have such challenges of their time, but I, first, I'd like to try the incentive route.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we go all the way in the back there? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you.
Well, Senator McCain, after that, thank you so much for coming to Cleveland. It's great to see you in person. One of the issues that has attracted me to your campaign over any of your Republican challengers is the issue of free trade, international globalization. You right now are standing in perhaps the most anti-trade, pro-protectionist county in the United States of America. With all due respect to my neighbors, my question for you, when you are the next president, you will face a tide, a strong tide of anti-globalization sentiment from a Democratic Congress. What will you do to change the narrative and convince people in northeast Ohio that perhaps their hesitance to embrace the global economy has caused the slower economy here than created it?
This meeting is adjourned. It's in some ways analogous to healthcare in this respect. People think that the problem with healthcare in America is the quality of healthcare. The problem is the affordability. I believe that the problem with free trade is not that we have free trade, because I believe in free trade and I can, I know I have history on my side. My friends, I study history. I study it all the time. And every time this country is in act protectionism and isolationism, we've paid a very heavy price, including world wars. So I feel very strongly. But where we have failed and failed miserably, and the reason why, justifiably, the people in this county and this state and the heartland of America and Michigan and Illinois and Pennsylvania and all the places where we've had this mass exodus of manufacturing jobs, is that we have failed to give the worker another chance. We have failed, we have failed miserably to give education and training to workers so that they can come here and work at the Cleveland Clinic, so that they can work in the information technology revolution. You know that there's 1.3 million people in the world today that make a living off eBay? Do you know that there is, that that number 10 years ago was minuscule compared to what it is today? Do you know that U.S. Steel, who just said they're going to open a location in the poorest, one of the poorest counties in America, in Wilcox, Alabama, are looking for trained workers, trained and educated workers? We've got to give these workers a second chance. The present programs for displaced workers, as a result of trade or any other reason, are failed miserably. They were designed for the 1950s, and they do not, they were designed for a time in America's history with an economic downturn here in Ohio. People would be laid off, the economy would come back, and they'd go back to the old jobs. The old jobs aren't coming back. It's the new jobs, it's the green technologies. If there's a challenge we have in America today, it's to develop these technologies which will eliminate our dependence on foreign oil. That should be a huge job opportunity. And yet, we don't have anything near, we don't have anything near, the kind of education and training programs. Where's the best, where's the best place we can go to educate and train displaced workers? It's the community colleges. And here in Ohio, we have great community colleges. They should be the ones that we say, here's the funding, here's the local needs of the economy, here's what we need, the kind of workers we need to supply to fill it. There's no reason why people should have to leave this beautiful state in order to go get a job someplace else. If they want to leave, fine, but it shouldn't be because of job opportunities. So I want to assure you that what I'll tell them is that I believe in free trade, and I could make an argument that trade is free. I will also tighten up on some of the abuses. The next time a toy comes in the United States from China that's going to poison our children, that'll be the last toy from China that comes into the United States of America. And when there's a, and when there's a blood thinner, and when there's a blood thinner that is actually taking lives of people, apparently from evidence that has been compiled, that'll be the last time. So we obviously, we obviously have to make sure that there are no, there are no imbalances in the free trade regimen. But I believe that if you raise barriers to goods and services, you do two things. One, you harm our economy, but two, you kind of show a little bit of disrespect for the American worker. Because I believe the American worker is the best-trained, best-equipped, most intelligent, hardest-working person in the world, and we can compete anywhere with any worker, as long as there is an opportunity and you have a trained and equipped workforce. Thank you very much. I look forward to that debate continuing on, and I understand the frustration. I understand the frustration. It's terrible here in the heartland of America. Yes, ma'am.
My husband and I spend half the year here, half the year in Sedona, so we're neighbors.
God bless you. Thank you.
Right. And what I'd just like to understand is, and I think when we're there, we're so much more aware of the issue, that the number of healthcare dollars that are, and I'm going to use the wording, quote, sucked up by illegals. There, what's happening on the border towns in Arizona, Texas, New Mexico, certainly. I mean, that's a disaster there. And I'd just like to understand how you feel that fits into your healthcare plan.
Thank you. Now, we are really adjourned. Look, my friends, especially in states like mine, we have overcrowded emergency rooms. We have unfunded liabilities that are crushing burdens financially on state and local governments because of the care for illegal immigrants. Now, let's just make one thing perfectly clear. If someone is in need of medical help, they're a human being, and we're going to give them treatment. I mean, that's just a fact. We're not going to let anyone die. But, having said that, we have to secure our borders, and that's our first priority. We must secure our borders, and we can do that, and we can do that with technology as well as physical barriers. I mean, it can be done. It's going to be expensive, it's going to be tough, it's going to be a challenge, but we can secure our borders. Once we have secured our borders, then we have a temporary worker program that has, is vitally, must have, a tamper-proof biometric documents, which would be verified by an electronic employment verification system. And the only person who could work here as a temporary worker is someone who has those documents. And if an employer hires someone else having that system in place, then the employer should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law, because there is an avenue to get temporary workers. And finally, look, there's 12 million people here illegally, my friends, and we failed to secure our borders, and we have to secure our borders. But they are God's children. They're God's children, and they have none of the protections of our laws. And many of them are being exploited every day and mistreated because they have none of those protections. So it's also a humanitarian issue. And we have to, on the principle that anyone who came here legally or waited legally to come to this country, they have to, people who came illegally have to be behind them. They have to pay a fine, they have to learn English, they have to do a whole bunch of things if they want to be eligible for citizenship in this country. And finally, finally, there's 2 million people who have come to this country illegally and have committed crimes. They need to be rounded up and deported immediately. Then we look at the others. Could I go all the way in the back, sir? And by the way, thank you for the tax dollars for Arizona. I forgot to mention that. Thank you. Yes.
First off, thank you for coming to Cleveland. Secondly, I'd like to ask, under your health plan, what is the role of Medicaid? I'm going to play expand, decrease. What's your answer?
Well, Medicaid, obviously Medicaid is a vital part of the program. It's a program that is a necessity for those who are in need in America. I mean, it's simply there. But if we are able to make health insurance available and affordable for more Americans, such as a small business person, or a person with some disability, or others, and we're able to make health insurance available to them, then it obviously has a beneficial effect on the number of people who have to be on Medicaid. But it is one of the safety nets. It's just clearly now, as we improve technology, as we have information sharing, as we have all the things I talked about before, that'll bring healthcare costs down and will bring Medicaid costs down. But it is a safety net that's going to have to be maintained, as you know. And the other thing, again, I want to point out, I will work with the governors for a guaranteed access program for those individuals who are uninsurable, chronic disease, a pre-existing condition, et cetera, who simply cannot obtain insurance today. And they may make too much money that they're not qualified for Medicaid, but not enough, obviously, to take care of their healthcare needs, as you well know. My friends, I can do another one here right in front. Yes, sir.
I want to say thank you for the commitment you have to the United States and for defending my freedom, my family's freedom, my children's freedom. Thank you very much. I represent a manufacturing firm here in Cleveland that exports half of our product outside the United States. I think you're on to something with the EMR. I'd like to hear more about standards that could be developed and what your thoughts would be, or recommendations would be, as for a company like ours, to look for those standards, to develop ways to make products and to distribute healthcare information so that it can be transferable and can be easily accessed by everyone and anyone.
Well, thank you. I mentioned earlier that we have a unique test program going on right here at the Cleveland Clinic, and that is a partnership that they have with Google, which builds on what is already, frankly, being done by Google. They provide information about people, only unfortunately, in my case, it's often shared. So, but in this case, in this case, they will, they will have, they have proper safeguards for the privacy of these records, and then that means that the doctors and the healthcare providers and the whoever they are who are involved in the care of this patient, and you know, with a major operation, it isn't just the surgeon, as we all know, it's the nurse, it's the person who provides the advice and counsel as to what's needed, it's the post-operative care, it's a large number of people who collectively now can join on the internet wherever they are. Cleveland Clinic now has extensions all over this state and in the state of Florida, and unless I'm wrong, you're going to see a larger expansion of it. And eventually, I'm also convinced, you will see the Cleveland Clinic and this technology shared with other medical institutions and care institutions throughout America. So it seems to me, in the conversation I had with the doctors here, is that it's very obvious that information is power, power is reductions in cost, and information, instead of carrying around a thick sheaf of a patient's medical records on paper, now we go online. Instead of the old x-ray, which you had to slap up on and examine, and they now have everything available on the computer. Again, one of the physicians here, Dr. Harris mentioned that he was on vacation, one of his patients went on vacation, and Dr. Harris, and I hope I'm depicting this correctly, detected a requirement for further tests for that patient. He immediately contacted that patient, the patient came back. Now, I don't see how you could have done that five years ago, doctor, unless you happened to stumble on something. But obviously, it's been facilitated. So not only does it reduce costs, but the life-saving aspects of this sharing of information is remarkable. And you know that one of the biggest problems we have in healthcare, and we don't like to talk about it a lot, is medical error, medical error, where they can't, which is, I'm sure that our nurse friends here would certainly agree, the illegible writing of many physicians makes it an incredible task to interpret. But the point is that they don't have to look at that anymore. They go online, and they know exactly what's needed for that patient. And I know it's here, but I also saw in another facility, the fact that monitoring of everyone in the emergency room is done instantaneously. Instead of the nurse having to visit or the physician every patient, all the vital signs, everything, including the patient's record, is there to be looked at and monitored constantly, and can be monitored from far away. So all I'm saying is that I believe the future of medicine, as far as quality is concerned, is directly related to information technology, to state the obvious. But I also believe that it's going to have the ancillary effect, and almost as important of bringing costs down. And, look, I just saw, Connie is here, Connie just had, how many weeks ago? Two weeks ago, two weeks ago. This great doctor right here, whose name I have difficulty pronouncing, because he's a great person from Croatia, doctor, I met, Dr. Mihailovich, operated on her five years ago, would have had to have her entire chest opened up. Now, thanks to this incredible technology, they went in, repaired a heart valve, and look, how many days after Connie? Two weeks after that operation, look at her now. She's well and beautiful. So, Connie, please, please, please. So that's, so that's really what it's all about. Dr. Mihailovich, thank you, and thank you for, in all due respect, for coming to this country and doing so much for so many people. We're proud to have you here, and I thank you for all you've done. And I just say, my friends, we're at the end of the line. I have learned a lot, as always. I want to urge you... I want to urge you to be a part of this dialogue about healthcare in America. It needs the input of every single citizen. We must reach consensus. And I want to tell you, when I'm President of the United States, I will reach my hand across the aisle to the Democrats, and we will work together to save Medicare, which is going to go broke, to save it, to save it because we owe it to future generations of Americans. I promise you, I will be the President of all the people, and I will fix this system working with Republicans and Democrats alike, because this issue is greater than any partisan issue that our nation faces. Thank you, and thank you for being here in God.